Alder Person Evans?
Present.
Hurt?
Here.
Barnes?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Houlis?
Here.
Healy?
Here.
And Mayor Harris?
Here.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Hope everyone is well. I am a little unwell, so if I'm a little stuffy and coughing, I apologize. Tonight, we will be presenting on two different proposed ordinances, and I have Planning and Zoning Manager Tanner Ossing here to assist me, especially if I keel over suddenly. They're in order urban ag and rental, but I'd like to begin, if I may, I tee in the back, with the Rental Registration Ordinance presentation. And Tim, can we go full screen on that or new? Okay. We'll work with it. Well, so the Rental Registration Program here in the city of Rock Island has a pretty long history. It's been around since 2004, so just shy of, just a little over 20 years now. It's important to note why we bother with a Rental Registration Inspection Program. It makes up a large portion of our built environment, so as you can see, about 37 percent, so over a third of our housing stock here in the city, is rental property. Are we able to show the slide? Wait for... Yes, I'd like to start with rental, if possible. Yep. Are we good back there, Tim? We good? Oh, okay. All right, I understand. Now, since the Rental Registration Program was first initiated in 2004, we have not actually made any substantial edits to the ordinance. It has remained essentially unchanged with only very minor tweaks. Can we move to the next slide, please? Part of what has spurred an interest in making some of these updates is that the program is actually running on all cylinders of late and has really begun to kick a lot of butt and get a lot done. As you can see here, the number of inspections actually being completed as we've returned to normal staffing levels and have had building official Jared Irvin in that driving seat has gone from only 1,030 in '23 to 1,711 in 2024, and I expect that number to increase yet again when we round out 2025. You can also see that just the number of registrations has dramatically expanded. Those numbers are a little confusing because it's the number of properties versus the number of units, so obviously multi-unit buildings are in that number, and we only expect that to continue as well. Also of note, short-term rentals, so this is our registrations for Airbnbs, Verbos, and other similar things. We're up to 17, which I have to confess is more than I would have expected us to have here in Rock Island, but it's revenue and it's going to see... Ah, thank you, I appreciate that. So as things have kind of ramped up and the program is really working as it was intended to, we now see that there's some room to make improvements to this process so that it continue to move from strength to strength. Next slide, please. So the next few slides kind of compare the old ordinance language and the proposed new updated language. So we'll begin with the application and licensing requirements. Currently, the rental ordinance only addresses long-term rentals, so these are your traditional kind of, you know, apartments. It does not make any mention of short-term rental regulations. For those of you who were around in like 2019, 2020, these regulations for short-term rentals were actually inserted into the zoning code. This new ordinance actually pulls those out and moves them, so all rental properties are handled in the same place, kind of under the same regime and framework. And you can see some of the requirements that would still exist in the zoning code for short-term rentals. None of that changes. The new ordinance also includes some important language about rent-to-own properties, so contract purchase properties. In the past, we've had some issues where someone claims that a property is rent-to-own and therefore not subject to registration. That is not always the case. This adds some language to clarify that if you do not have a legitimate rent-to-own contract recorded with the county, we will consider it a rental property in need of registration. Next slide, please. Fees and fines, revenue generation, one of my favorite subjects. In the current ordinance, we have some issues where it's not really clear what the penalty should be if there's a lack of compliance with the ordinance, or if we find that there are code violations in the context of rental property. The new ordinance actually lays out a framework for explaining the different types of fees for different types of applications, as well as what the fines would be for different degrees of infraction. This language here also changing the actual annual licensing costs is updated to reflect what was recently adopted next door in Moline, so the goal is to kind of have the same sort of licensing framework. Next slide, please. Here is a admittedly slightly warped to fit on this slide inspection form. So looking at this, there's three different areas of code compliance that we're looking at, things that are major, things that are moderate, things that are minor. And each one of those things is pulled directly out of the International Property Maintenance Code, which has been adopted for many years by the city. So when an inspector goes into a rental property, this is the checklist that they use. It passes or it fails, and it's from this sheet that we can assess whether or not they're meeting that minimum code threshold. Some of those new fines associated medium or minor, moderate, major, are pulled directly from this. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Typical sorts of things we're looking at, just to give you an illustration, we're making sure that the buildings have a secure envelope, things are caulked shut. You can look into the basement of some properties and find some interesting structural elements. We make sure that those are taken care of. We're also looking at outlets, making sure those are functional and safe, as well as making sure things like fire and smoke alarms are working appropriately. Next slide. Inspection frequency, this is actually one of the more major changes that is being proposed. So in the existing ordinance, depending on how an inspection goes for a given rental property, it's given a classification, and that's A, B, or C, or N if it's a new property, so just constructed. Depending on what that classification is, it is given a different rental inspection cycle. So we might be back there every year, every other year, every four years, depends on how it ranks. This has proven to be really hard to track appropriately and has also made it so that we're never really catching up on the backlog. It's very, very hard for staff, even now with everything moving as well as it is, to actually keep up pace and gain ground because of the way that this works. The new ordinance proposes a more fluid framework, which says that every five years at a minimum properties will be inspected, and the caveat to that is we can inspect a property at any time. So we might well be there every year if what we're seeing at that property warrants it. If a property does not need to be looked at again very often, we'll just make sure that we're there at least every five years. If a tenant has a complaint, if we go through the neighborhood and see that there's an issue, we will be able to schedule an inspection and go take a look at it. Next slide, please. This is also something new. Many of you, I'm sure, have been in other cities where you've, you may have seen this. You go into an apartment building and in like a common hallway or near the mailboxes, there is actually a license displayed, similar to what you might see in like a restaurant, showing that they are a licensed rental property. At present, tenants actually don't have any way of knowing if they're in a registered rental property that has passed inspection unless they call us and ask. The idea here is to provide some reassurance to tenants that they are in a legit rental. So the way that this is worded, if it's a single-family home that's a rental property, it can of course be displayed somewhere in the home or at minimum be given to the tenant. If there's an inspection undertaken at the property or an inspector shows up to take a look at the property having seen something amiss or gotten a complaint, they can ask, "Do you have a copy of a rental license?", and if the tenant says no, then that's something to follow up on. In multi-unit buildings, like a traditional apartment building, it would be sufficient for it to be posted out in a common hallway. The idea here again is to try to protect tenants, make sure there's just an added level of reassurance that they know that they're in something that's safe and legal. Next slide, please. These changes are a little bit more geared at helping the landlord. So in the existing ordinance, it's not exactly clear what the conditions are for a rental license to be in a state of suspension or to ultimately be revoked. And historically, the lack of clarity about when these things should occur and what they mean has actually resulted in very few rental licenses ever being revoked, even though there are probably examples where we should have taken that step. The existing ordinance also does not lay out a very clear appeals process, so if a landlord has their license revoked, it's not really clear what steps they should take. The new ordinance clearly defines what each of those things means, what their impact is, as well as laying out what the landlord should do if they want to kind of work through an appeals process. They would first appeal to the building official if they didn't like that answer, then they'd appeal to the inspections Commission. If they didn't like that answer, they would appeal to you, the City Council. That follows the same sort of appeal structure we have for many other licenses and similar This also involves posting a property at the time that it is, that the license for it is revoked, explaining that it is not legal for it to be made available for rent. We can, we've talked a little bit about rent abatement in the development of this ordinance. What this actually is written to do is to notify a tenant that it is not legal, once the license has been revoked, for them to be charged rent, and if they choose at that point to withhold rent, under state statute, there's a process that they can follow. If there are questions about that, I would direct some of them to Attorney Day, who can kind of talk a little bit more about the legality of how that would work. Next slide, please. To kind of sum it all up, really, the whole point of this is to maintain a healthy, safe, stable, built environment. Rental property makes up a large part of that built environment, and we want everyone to be holding to the same minimum standards. Again, property values are an issue in some of the neighborhoods where we have higher percentages of rental units. We do see that negatively impact property values, and we need to create more of a floor. We also need to make sure that we have an enforcement structure that is realistic, that we are able to follow through on, and many of these changes have been made or are being proposed with that in mind. With that, I am happy to take your questions.
I do have one. So do we have an ordinance or a ruling that property needs to either have the landlord or a property manager within certain mileage? So should that be put in here or does it exist?
It's in there. So it's a, it's kind of hidden in the existing ordinance, so it's not as easy to find. This one calls it out a lot more clearly. I want to say it might be on page two of the draft. So if you look in there, what it basically says is, "The owner or an appointed designated property manager must live or maintain an office within 50 miles of the city boundary." The logic there is, is that if one of the inspectors shows up and there's a problem that needs to be urgently addressed, that person can be there within, say, an hour to reasonably sort it out.
So Miles, when you're talking about the inspections over a five-year period, are you looking at the specific property or are you looking at, say, an LLC? Or are you looking at a specific person saying, "I have five properties, we're going to look at those more," or just contained to said property?
It's by property, so each unit would be inspected at minimum every five years, but staff could show up at any time and with any level of frequency to address problems as they became aware of them.
Yeah, I understand. I'm saying, so if I have six properties and one of mine is a piece of crap and you go in there, are you going to go towards the other properties and start looking at them or are you going to isolate it to just this unit?
So there is some language in there talking about the way that the building official and his team can take a holistic approach to enforcement. We do have some landlords who own a very large number of units throughout the city. If they have, let's say, a not-so-great reputation for maintaining those properties, we may choose to go and make sure we cover more territory in a particular go. So it does not mandate that, but the door is open to that.
I would highly suggest that.
I have a question. Miles, for the process to withhold rent for a tenant, does that process ensure their protection from being sued by the landlord?
I would turn it over to Attorney Day to talk about what the state statute on that topic says.
Yes, so that would be a defense to any eviction proceeding. If they were to file an eviction proceeding, they would point to the ordinance as well as state statute and say that they were not legally obligated to pay rent to this property because it's not, it's not in good habitable condition at this point. And that's also under common law, too. It's not just by statute. Basically, if you don't have a habitable residence and you're offering it to rent, you can withhold rent until they make it habitable.
And so to clarify kind of what our role in this is, once we've posted and declared that the property is not, it's not legal here for it to be rented out because it does not meet minimum code requirements, that's what the tenant would hold in their hand and say, "I now, with this in hand, withhold my rent." Does that make sense?
And to be clear, the city wouldn't get directly involved with the dispute between the landlord and the tenant, but it would be, they'd be made aware of that defense available to any eviction proceeding.
On that point, I understand that its place may not be in this ordinance change. However, I think I and perhaps the public desire more tenant services or education in our community. It doesn't really matter if the city regulates rental properties, if tenants are not aware of said regulation, and I think you're getting to it a little bit by requiring landlords to provide the license to tenants and the posting if the building is, you know, if the license gets revoked, for example, but I think that there is a need for greater tenant education and resources in our community. I recognize that the city may not be the right entity for that, but I just would like to say, I'd like to see the city partner with other organizations potentially or resource other organizations to provide that for our tenants. That's just a comment, though. Two questions or maybe a comment from me. One, are we licensing the real estate or the business?
So it's each property gets a separate license.
Okay, so...
So like an LLC might own 10 different rental units around the city. Each one of them is getting a different license, and that's currently how it is and how it would remain.
If we're licensing the building, does it transfer with new ownership?
No.
Why not?
It's to the person who is the current owner, who's receiving that license. So they're non-transferable licenses.
But we're licensing the building, not the owner of the building. We're not saying...
No, it's one, it's a license to the person per building or per unit. Does that make sense?
So we're licensing, we're giving them the license to be a landlord, not necessarily licensing the property?
Yes, to be a landlord at that property, like at that specific address.
The thing that we are regulating is the authority to be a landlord for a particular property. We're not saying that this property can be a rental property. We're saying...
Correct, correct. The real way to think about this is that really having a rental license, it's a business license. So that's an important way to frame how this is all structured. So in order to operate the business of your rental property, you need this license.
Correct. If that is the case, are we ensuring that in instances where the owner that we are licensing is an LLC or some other corporation, that they are appropriately licensed with like the Illinois Secretary of State, making sure that they have a certificate of good standing, that they are a legal entity with the state that can, for example, receive a license from the city? Is that something that we check?
So if you look in, if you look at the language for the kind of application procedure, it talks about how we expect that every single agent of an LLC or similar legal entity be identified as part of the application process for the license. There is also, excuse me, there is a provision, just a blanket statement saying they must comply with all applicable, you know, local, state, and federal regulations. We can build those on the back end into our review of any application process. One of the things, Alderman, Parker, that you'll be familiar with is my penchant for trying to simplify some of these ordinances by both making them more streamlined, but also actually covering more ground. Where on an administrative level, as things adjust, we're able to cover all of these things without having to constantly revisit the ordinance language. If there's some specific things you want to make sure that are administratively included in that kind of umbrella statement, we can definitely make sure to get those wrapped in.
Yes, very much. One, I want to make sure that corporate owners are, that they have a certif, what is it? A certificate of good standing with the Illinois Secretary of State. I want to make sure that they have that. And also, being a property manager is a licensed trade in the state of Illinois, right? So if individuals are alleging to be the property manager for a property, is, is there a point in our, either administrative process or the ordinance where there's potential that we are licensing a landlord that does not have the appropriate license from the state to be a broker, for example?
At this point in time, I can tell you that I really don't know. I mean, first of all, you know, we haven't had the best, we were just talking about Tyler Technologies, we don't have the best records around that kind of thing. I'm hoping that we will be able to get that solved here. If you want, we can definitely include specific reference to that in the ordinance because that is a more specific and obvious thing to do, so we could add that language as well.
Yeah, I don't claim to have an answer right now, but on the administrative side of things, maybe not the ordinance language side of things, but as it relates to administering the ordinance that we are going to potentially approve, taking those two aspects into consideration, I would encourage you to do so.
I think the building official and Attorney Day and I will want to touch base on that and look more closely at it, but it's a good suggestion.
I think we've got a lot of property managers out there that are managing properties for landlords that are not licensed real estate brokers, which they need to be in the state of Illinois.
I think that's likely true.
Right, and so if we can make that problematic for these problematic landlords and problematic property managers, then there's a way, maybe the building passes code, but going after them for the fact that they do not have a real estate broker license from the state is one strategy to address problem landlords.
Definitely. It actually leads me to also make one other comment that I just want us all to think about when we conceptualize this as a business license. There's a lot of really good landlords who are providing a necessary and important service for people who need to rent for whatever reason in our community. And so we do want to make sure that everyone is playing, you know, fair and square on an even playing field, and that is kind of an underlying part of this ordinance, in the same way that we have other types of business licenses to ensure the same for whatever other type of activities we know we have here in the community.
My last comment, if we're going to include a new appeals process for license suspension or revocation, if that process is going to include the inspections Commission, council, mayor as making appointments to that commission and us as approving it, I would like us to consider making sure that there is tenant representation on that commission. Right now, that commission is made up of business and land, you know, business owners and landlords. There's a real lack of tenant perspective on that commission, and so if this is the commission that landlords are going to appealing, the city denying them a license, I would like to make sure that somebody with a tenant perspective is going to be there to push back potentially on landlords wanting to appeal their revocation.
That would be a separate ordinance to amend. Mayor Harris, you and I might want to have a little sit down and talk about that commission and others and their compositions, and that kind of might be part of a larger conversation about how they're, how they're filled, vacancies are filled.
Sure. I have another question for you, Miles. So our process for inspection goes every five years. In addition to that, is that something that tenants can initiate?
Yes, they can call, and we often get calls from tenants who say that they have some sort of issue that they suspect is a code violation, and we will go out there and take a look at that.
And we have the manpower for that? Because that would be pretty difficult.
We try our best. Part of, again, that, that desire on staff's part to adjust this inspection schedule is to try to be more realistic about manpower. We are at full staffing levels right now, which is three different housing and property maintenance inspectors. I would point out, if you go to the census, the census has an estimate on the number of rental units in a given community, and we're somewhere in the ballpark of like 5,500. So we also have a long way to go if that's roughly the total we're trying to get registered and inspected. So it's quite a big, big order. I would also point out that our neighboring community, I won't name names, but they're right next door, in the Rental Registration Inspection Ordinance they recently adopted, their program only looks at the exterior. They do not actually go into units to look at them. We always have had that requirement, and we will continue to go through a property and try to look at every single thing. It takes time. That one-page or sheet used to be more than one page. We've tried to simplify and streamline it so that an inspection ideally should only take maybe 15 or 20 minutes because the inspectors know what they're looking for. Bing, bang, boom, get through it all in as timely a manner as possible. But again, the task is, is pretty great here to try to get into that. But yes, any tenant who calls has a concern, we go and look at it and verify whether there is a code issue there or not.
Sure, sure. One more question, I'm playing devil's advocate here. If we, if a property passed our inspection and, God forbid, the building failed, would that be on us or would that more so than the property owner? Or how would that legally come about?
If a property, and this would be true more broadly as well, if a property is found to be code deficient, then the property owner is responsible for addressing those code deficiencies, and we have a full enforcement process for what happens if they fail to do so. So that would be true of really anything, and that's an important thing to think about here, is there's two parallel things. There's the business licensing process and maintaining the business license, and then there's the actual code enforcement, which would be more applicable to just about anything. It'd be following the same, same sort of thing. To kind of give it, give it a different framing, you might have a retail business that has to have some sort of business license from us to operate, and it may also be in a building that has code violations, just about like, you know, the bricks are falling out, the windows are shattered. There's two related issues, but they're technically happening in parallel tracks of enforcement. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah. So, ah, once, once an owner, once an owner passes our inspection, they're not liable for anything catastrophic after that?
I'll turn that over to the city attorney.
No, they would definitely still be liable for any catastrophic incidences that would occur. They have the duty basically to maintain the property in a reasonably safe condition, regardless of whether or not it passes our inspection. In terms of city liability and how that would play into a situation like that, it would be the case of the city of Rock Island knew about the issues at a building, didn't do anything about the issues of the building, and allowed it to pass inspection. So there's different layers there. That's not speaking to any other cases that may be similar to these sets of acts, but it's very fact-specific, and the city would have to have knowledge or basically have a high degree of negligence by not inspecting the property, or they should have known of the failures of the building itself and failed to take any action to protect, especially if there's people that are residing in the property. That's why with this ordinance, we go in, we say it's unfit, get the people, you know, they know that they should be out of that building, basically.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, the inspection's just going to be a snapshot of that day is what it's going to be. You know, it can change. I had one property that they ripped their own copper piping out.
Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah. Thank you.
We see, we see it all, don't we? Any other questions from the council? Wonderful. Well, if there's any other feedback as you reviewed the draft, please don't hesitate to reach out. Much like this other ordinance that Tanner is about to present on, we're hoping to collect... Much like this other ordinance that Tanner is about to present on, we're hoping to collect any feedback you have and bring something back in June for you to take a vote on. So please don't hesitate to reach out. If anyone wants to meet and discuss this further, please do. At this time, I'd like to invite the Planning and Zoning Manager Tanner Ossing up to discuss the proposed urban agriculture ordinance.
Okay, so tonight, we are going to talk about urban agriculture, quite fun topic here. Staff has been working on this for a rather, rather long time. So to start, what is urban ag? So urban ag includes a wide range of topics, including gardening, keeping of livestock, beekeeping, chickenkeeping amongst other things in an urban setting. The ordinance defines two main types, so this is what staff uses to differentiate between the types of urban agriculture one might encounter in Rock Island. Those include urban gardens, so these gardens exist on smaller lots, mainly north of the Rock River, around the area where we're at now. These lots could be used for regular old backyard gardening, as well as chickenkeeping and beekeeping. Urban farms are on larger lots, south of the Rock River. This is where other more rural activities may take place, such as the raising of livestock, and also where large farm machinery might be, might be allowed. Next slide, please. So how is urban ag regulated in Rock Island? Currently, as some of you may know, we have an urban chicken ordinance. This ordinance basically allows folks to have backyard chickens on their property. It's been in effect for a while now. We have a license that goes along with that. The state also regulates some urban ag activities. They have the Illinois Bee and Apiaries Act. This basically just asks folks who have bee colonies to register those with the state, and then there's some maintenance and kind of best practice beekeeping requirements that goes along with that, and an inspector from the state monitors, monitors that. And then there's the Right to Garden Act, which is a newer act, I'll go into this on more detail later, but it basically allows folks the right to have vegetable gardens on their private property. Other than that, the city has no other regulations on gardening, beekeeping, or raising livestock, or other agricultural activities within the city, and so that's what this ordinance attempts to do. Next slide, please. So a little more on the Right to Garden Act, it's relevant to what we're talking about tonight. It's a fairly recent act adopted in 2022. In short, it preamps municipalities from prohibiting vegetable gardening on private property. The exact language is at the bottom of the slide here, but just basically says, any person may cultivate vegetable gardens on their own property, or on private property of another, with the permission of the owner, in any county, municipality, or other political subdivision of this state. So that, you know, basically says we can't outlaw gardens on private property. But it does allow home, home rule units like Rock Island to have regulations on other types of activities that go on there, such as, you know, where the vegetables can be planted, so set back standards. We can control water use, so maybe how big of a water tank you can have on that property, and then other vegetation control of weed and grass. Next slide, please. So why regulate this? Urban agriculture is growing in popularity and is already present in Rock Island. Just of note here, 17 of the 30 properties recently sold by the city are planned-to-be gardens, and then we also have 16 urban chicken licenses. So it's a popular activity that we see growing within the city. There are numerous benefits to urban agriculture. Some include food access, community engagement. The city had our urban garden program in part as kind of a sustainable land management practice, so we wouldn't have to mow those lots. And then these gardens or urban agriculture can also provide learning and entrepreneurial opportunities. And so what this ordinance sets to do, like many land use ordinances, is to just provide some general rules that ensures compatibility with adjacent properties, and to promote general health, safety, and welfare. Next slide, please. So what will this help? Admittedly, you know, some of our gardens do have some maintenance problems, as I'm sure folks are aware of. Some are, like in the two photos here, overrun with weeds and grass, some may have rotten vegetables in them, and so we need to have some standards in place so that staff can go out there and have an ordinance language to back us up to get these, get these spots cleaned up. Next slide, please. So the meat and potatoes, if you will, starting here with some of the ordinance language on location and size. So the first thing up top, staff is proposing to prohibit activity on lots with foreclosed, vacant, or abandoned structures. We have a register for the, registry for these properties, so it'd be pretty easy to identify if there's gardening activities happening on these. More of a public safety concern there with having folks around those, around those buildings and that activity going on on those properties. Other than that, we would allow gardening, chickenkeeping, and beekeeping on all lots with occupied structures. This is something that's already allowed now. We have the chickenkeeping, urban chicken license in place to monitor this currently. We would also allow gardening only on vacant lots, so no chickenkeeping or beekeeping on vacant lots, less than one acre, and require a special use, on residential lots, less than one acre, and require a special use permit on lots in other districts. So that one acre mark, staff was looking at it, that's basically about half a city block, and we feel like that's a reasonable size, and we really wouldn't want to go beyond that if somebody wanted a larger, larger garden than that in one given area. The other two here, so we would allow gardening on vacant residential lots less than five acres, only in southwest Rock Island, so that kind of scales up going to the southwest with a more rural context out there than in the main part of the city. And then we would require a special use permit, of course, for that size and other parts of the city. And then allow urban agriculture of any kind on vacant residential lots, five acres or larger, so this would include both urban gardens and urban farms, and this would only be in southwest Rock Island. Next slide, please. So continuing on here with some of the main topic areas that this ordinance addresses, urban gardens and urban farms, I already touched on, but this would, these sections would provide standards for maintenance of those areas, along with setbacks, if the area could have a, like shed-like structure, a season extending structure, along with other activities. The chickenkeeping section of the proposed ordinance that was passed around, that would basically follow the current ordinance that we have now. Those standards are based on best practices and what we see from other communities, but it would no longer require a license as part of that. For beekeeping, this would include basic best practices, similar to the urban chicken ordinance regarding setbacks and where hives can be located, and it also references out state requirements in that Illinois Bee and Apiaries Act. For livestock keeping, again, this would just be southwest Rock Island. I'd adapt some standards from the county, so the idea here was to mirror some of the county's standards, because some of these properties are right next door to a property in the county. There are specific requirements on setbacks, so where livestock's, livestock area can be, livestock keeping area can be in relationship to the property line, and then the number of animals per property. And then the last one here, it's kind of a specialized activity, but controlled grazing. This would be focused on sheeps and goats, mainly to control invasive species, maybe in a hard-to-reach area such as a ravine. This is, practice is becoming more and more common, it'd be a temporary activity where those animals could go in there and basically eat up the invasive species, clean up a hard-to-reach area, and then put it, put it back to a good state. And that, again, would only be allowed on a temporary basis. Next slide, please. So staff put this little graphic together. This focuses on vacant lots, kind of in the heart of the city, where we might see urban gardens. One of the, one of the things we know is, these gardens typically go all the way up to the property line, they might have tall vegetable crops like corn going beyond houses. So we wanted to put this graphic together to show what this ordinance would do. So the five-foot area, that green area on the slide, is a five-foot lawn buffer where no crops, vegetable crops would be allowed to be planted, and then the required 20-foot setback would be for vegetables four feet or higher, such as corn, that would need to be set back from the street there. And the idea here would be to have it in line with houses, or 20 feet back if there's no houses around it on that property. Next slide, please. So in summary, more and more residents are interested in urban agriculture, it's growing in popularity. Staff, you know, believe simple rules should be implemented to reduce some compatibility issues that we've been seeing, and also recognize the difference from the main part of the city and southwest Rock Island. And overall, urban ag benefits the community and can be a selling point for the city. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
I've got several questions.
Sure.
First of all, in my ward, there's a lot of community gardens, and first of all, I think that's a problem.
Sure.
But the second thing is, if we're going to have community gardens like any other ordinance, are we contacting the surrounding residents, even inform them whether they want it, because some of these gardens are sitting on the side properties, that people think that that's a lot of money into it, and now they're looking at a burden. I've had a lot of complaints about it, and so as far as, I just think that there should be some kind of, they, in the first word, I know.
Mm-hmm. So something that I think staff want to really highlight for the council, especially true in the first word, because there is a high concentration of this activity there, they're not technically community gardens, right? So it's just private gardens. People who own the lot are using it as they wish to use it. We wouldn't normally require someone who's, you know, doing yard work to notify their residents of what they're doing next door, even if, say, your neighbor doesn't really like what you're choosing to do, right? This activity is different than many of the other things a neighbor might do, but they're not community gardens. They're not being done with the intent of serving the neighborhood or the community. It's for private use by that household or that individual which is tending it. So it doesn't mean that we can't regulate it, of course. It doesn't mean that we can't in some way require additional things because of the potential for negative impact on neighbors. But I do want to highlight for everyone, like, they're not community gardens in the way that you might see in other communities around our region or around the country. Here in Rock Island, we have a somewhat unique experience of a high volume of private gardens on vacant lots. So I just want to make that as a clarifying point.
And in my respect, that even with the big price, the reality, if the road issue is coming from it, it's going a lot of damage to the community. And when you're telling me that we're southern provinces, the people that just have two or three or four lots in certain areas of the city, I'm sorry, I'm going to always be a person fighting.
The, the impetus to try to sell the lots has been a long-running one. So the city's many vacant lots were acquired primarily many, many years ago as the result of demos. So city had to acquire, before the law changed about 10 years ago, had to acquire the houses in order to tear them down, and then was left holding, at one point, I think something like 250 vacant lots, primarily concentrated in the first and second wards, a little also though in the fifth. Those have been available for sale for many years, listed on the city website, staff contacting adjacent property owners, you know, all sorts of different efforts. It just so happens that in recent years, increasingly, the only people applying to purchase them have been people interested in this activity. Doesn't mean that that can't be restricted, but just as a point of historical context, there's been quite a push to try to offload these because they're not serving any municipal purpose, and there is a cost to the city and then by extension, the public in holding vacant lots long-term. So there's a balancing act here that I think needs to be explored, where the negative consequences of this particular activity, unregulated as it is now, are matched against the need to offload underperforming properties. In my view, ideally, the neighbors would be buying up vacant lots, which don't have a potential for, you know, future development. We have a bunch of very narrow, non-conforming lots. Ideally, the neighbor would just have an expanded side yard, but people have not expressed that kind of interest in large numbers. Again, the messaging on that can always be improved, but that has been kind of the impetus for entertaining so many of these sale offers.
And I would, I would message, for whatever reason, there's no messaging really going on until you look up and get, obviously, you see a fork coming out of the window of your house.
Yes.
You know, something's got to give, and like I said, it's one of the main things that I also heard as I was knocking on the doors, especially like I said, in the first word, it's a problem. And I had to sit down with you, I had to figure out how to be addressed. I've got five right now that we've taped, that we really need to work on. So how would we adequately go and deal with the neighbors that are in that community?
Well, Alderman Evans, I mean, part of the reason to bring this proposed ordinance forward is exactly because staff recognize that this has been a long-burning issue. And as there's growing applications from people to buy property, most of them, as was pointed out in the earlier slides, are interested in using them for this activity. So we do need to, agreed to establish some, some guidelines for how this is dealt with, and some rules of the road, which, again, as was highlighted by Tanner, we don't have any now. And I would, I would very much like to spend some time, because your ward in particular has a great concentration of this, to discuss in more detail kind of what staff were thinking would be of help, but also get your input specifically. Any council member who wants, much like the rental ordinance, to give specific feedback on how this particular issue, which is, again, somewhat unique to Rock Island, it's, it's hard to find an example of another community our size in our region where this is happening at anything like this scale.
I would agree that, you know, it can be an overabundance. So I think in moderation, because I have used a community garden before, but I agree with what he's saying, that there should be, you know, you know, when you really look at it, you don't want like an overabundance.
Sure. And again, there, there's quite a diversity in what individuals are doing in their garden lots. There are some real good shining examples of very well maintained, excuse me, very well-maintained gardens. Many others, though, that could use some work. So it's not just a matter, as you're saying, of establishing rules of the road for how they're maintained, but also perhaps how they're, how many are being established and where. That's another thing that we could certainly talk about.
Does the, does the state's right to garden law preserve property owners' right to garden in vacant lots, or just lots that have a structure on them?
It's a little open-ended. It says that there is a fundamental right to garden on property that you own. It also says that cities are able to put in place reasonable regulations. Is it a reasonable regulation to prohibit the activity outright? I think that could be debated. The law is relatively new, again, only came out a few years ago. I don't believe that there's been any case law that's, you know, come up of, of late around it. It would be definitely something that we can look a little more closely into, but it is worth pointing out, you know, Illinois is often on the cutting edge of protecting these sorts of rights as they choose to enshrine them, and I would caution very strongly against anything too heavy-handed. There is a right for people to use their property as they see fit, and lord knows, many people have vacant lots, or what we might characterize as vacant lots, that they see they're using in a perfectly agreeable way, that may or may not be so agreeable, and we've had to attack each of those different types of scenarios carefully and with, with nuance. So does it explicitly say in the state law, municipalities may prohibit this outright on vacant lots? Does not say anything that specific.
Yeah, just the, the definition under the Act for Vegetable Garden, it is defined as any plot or ground or elevated soil bed on residential property, like it says on residential property, but if you go to the next section, it then does talk about, any person may cultivate vegetable gardens on their own property or on the private property of another with the permission of the owner. But I would say the definition itself does include residential property.
Alderman Hurd.
Couple of questions. One, where did the, where did the city decide that this one acre was the appropriate size and the five acres? Where, where did that, where did that arbitrary number come from?
We have a number of other ordinances that use that as kind of like the dividing line between smaller things and larger things, so it was just pulled because that would be code consistent, but there's no other deeper reasoning for that.
But that one acre is not set in stone, that could be something.
Nope, nope. Again, I want to emphasize, this is a discussion. Again, I want to emphasize, this is a discussion we're having about the best path forward. So what's been drafted and proposed is just that, a proposal so that we can get feedback from all of you and work through exactly what all the details should be.
Okay. I've had several emails in the last couple of days regarding this as well. So of the 17 properties that the city, that was stated in the presentation that were sold, that are being used, are a major, can you, like, give me an example of the majority of where all those are located at? I mean, are they all, are any of them the proposed five-acre version, or some of these?
No, no, no. The larger sites would only be south of the Rock River.
Okay.
And I do, and actually, that's a, something that I would like to highlight as well. Some of that language about stuff in southwest Rock Island is staff looking ahead to potential annexations of what is now farmland. So one of the things, as, as you'll recall, that was highlighted as part of the Housing Strategic Development Plan, was the need to develop some plans around strategic annexations in our southwest area for future residential and industrial commercial development. One of the things we need to think about is that a lot of the land on our periphery is currently agricultural land, some of which may have, say, horses on it or other things. So a lot of that language is kind of looking ahead to making sure that if we approach property owners and discuss annexation, they can achieve reassurance that for as long as they're using the land, they'll be able to continue to kind of use it as they were until such time that development takes place. So that's kind of what's, what's on staff's mind with some of that language as well.
Just a couple more. My next question is, so of these 17 that the city sold, was the city, did the city have knowledge that that was the sole purpose of the purchase of the land?
It's indicated on their applications what their intended uses are. So some of the other things people might say is outside yard expansion, or I'm just buying it for more room for my dog, or whatever it might be. Those 17 are people who indicated that that is what they plan to use them for. They may not actually, but I have every reason to think they will.
Is there a way that you could get the council, like a mapped-out location of, because what I'm, at least what I'm hearing from residents, and I think it's probably a crossover between Board One and Board Two, is like, how many in a specific area? And I understand we have some areas like that, but I'm not sure what the, what the ultimate, does it reducing their value of their homes, might have any things up?
Staff have actually been working actively to try to put together a map exactly like that, so that we can also better kind of define exactly what's going on, because it's not as easy as just like running a search of city property, because, again, most of it's held under, you know, dozens of different family names, and it's all private. We have been working on putting that together, and when we have it completed, we'd like to share that with council. I would say they are primarily concentrated in the first ward, because historically, that's where the city owned most of the vacant lots, because that's where most of the housing demolitions over the years took place. Probably number two is the second ward where that would be true. Again, there's a little scattered in other parts of the city as well, but it's primarily concentrated there.
Last question we have, Miles, on this is, how, I know this sounds, how do you plan on enforcing these? I mean, we're having trouble keeping up with people that have their grass grown, you know, so high, and I mean, how, how are, what is the planned enforcement? And I'm having a hard time thinking that we are actually staffed well enough to be overseeing these garden areas.
Well, as was discussed with the rental ordinance, you know, we're getting better and better at doing more and more with the same or fewer people every year. So I don't want to pretend that it's not a challenge to try to enforce property maintenance, and certainly looking at something like this, there will be an increase in the workload. To a certain extent, though, I mean, that's, that's what needs to happen. We need to do the work. It would likely be a collaborative effort with both the inspections division and the planning and zoning division working together to cover as much, much ground as possible. This is my suspicion, I can't guarantee this, but I would think that after a couple of years of enforcement, there are some folks who are engaging in this activity who will stop engaging in it, because it won't be worth it. For whatever reason, they won't be able to meet the requirements we have, and it will probably gradually decline in popularity as the rules that we, whatever rules we ultimately adopt are really being enforced. There's another element of this that I think is very important to highlight. The majority of the folks who are engaged in this activity are representative of our immigrant refugee populations. There is a communication barrier that we will also need to work through as part of this enforcement process. And there's probably some messaging and communication strategies we might employ a little differently here to try to get through to people that they need to maintain their properties in reasonable ways. So it is going to be a task, but we, we've kind of talked about how that would work and what we would expect to see happen after a couple of years of enforcement.
Miles, how soon can the council, or the, you know, the rest of us, expect to get some, I guess, a deep dive on information regarding what these regulations are? I mean, it's different than grass growing.
So you should have in your inbox a copy of the draft ordinance that I sent out on Friday. I want to make sure everyone got that, so if you didn't get it, please let me know. But it's all there. So, so again, the goal here was to just kind of open the discussion. This has been a long-running issue, as Tanner can attest, that we've been aware of for many years. It's just been very, very hard to figure out what the right way to do enforcement and what regulations we should have should be. Again, we're trying to balance property rights and then, you know, neighbor rights, right? The community's needs and the individuals' needs, always very challenging to do. And there's a lot of gray area when it comes to this particular activity.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure that we have something here that addresses, that addresses the surrounding residents, that they're aware. One of the biggest problems that I'm having is the surrounding residents aren't aware that this is getting ready to come up until someone goes out there and starts digging in the yard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And like I said, I went to those five properties, and there are some nice houses around some of them.
Sure.
When people invest that kind of money, they shouldn't just be pushed along like that.
Definitely. I, I, again, Alderman Evans, I would like to specifically, because your ward in particular has such a high concentration, have some time one-on-one with you. Perhaps we could even do a little two-on-one conversation with Alderman Hurt, because the second highest concentration is in the second ward. And it would be good to get some more specific feedback from you about how should people be notified, what other concerns do we need to address, and the like. Though, again, I emphasize, this activity is taking place throughout the whole of the city. You'd be surprised, on a different note, about how much beekeeping there is, Alderwoman Swanson, I know you're not a huge fan of bees, but they're all around us. And we do, we do reasonably need to come up with some, some just baseline rules about this activity, so.
Well, can I get some clarity? Is this, so we're not licensing this activity, we're, in fact, we're removing the license for the chickens?
For the chickens, yes.
So is this zoning regulation? Is this land use?
Yep, that's how it's proposed.
This is a zoning change?
That's how it's proposed. Well, it's not in the zoning code, but it functions basically using the tools of zoning, yes.
Okay. Will this affect hydroponic farms, like tapestries at the botanical center?
Hydroponic farming is a form of urban agriculture, but no, in that particular case, there would be no negative consequence.
And that's been, you've thought about, I mean, that's been a part of the consideration?
Keep, keep in mind, we also have another very large hydroponics facility in the southwest of Rock Island that is, of course, top of mind for us.
Very far away from the fifth ward, I didn't think.
Yeah, but still incredibly valuable for the city to have, so.
Certainly. I guess, this is all fine. I'll defer to my colleagues and what they want to do about urban farming and agriculture. I receive complaints and I see issues far more about pollinator and native plant gardens, right? Boy, you know, is this a nuisance, or is this a pollinator garden?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that's obviously not included in this, but
No.
If there's a next thing to go after that causes chronic nuisance problems for the city, it's pollinator gardens and having either some, it seems silly to me to license pollinator gardens, but some sort of, how do we properly regulate pollinator gardens so that they are actually pollinator gardens and not weed messes, right? I fully support native plants and all that jazz, but a lot of the time, it's used to just...
I mean, who could have anything against purple cone flower?
Yeah, sure. But even more so, even more so than native plants and pollinator gardens, it seems absurd to me that we are concerned about chickens when dogs are overwhelmingly the number-one nuisance animal that people own in the city of Rock Island, right? I recognize it's an emotional subject, people love their dogs and all that stuff, but a chicken has never caused the child to go to the E R department, right? A chicken has never barked until 3:00 in the morning, keeping neighbors awake, causing the nissies conflicts and things like that, right? It occurs to me that we should explore what other neighboring communities are doing to regulate dogs. We don't even have, I mean, people could have 12 dogs on their property.
Yeah, yes. I am actually the author of the Dogs and Cat Ordinance of the city of Rock Island, so this, as you will recall, came up several years ago now. And one of the discussions with the council at that time was, would we or would we not impose a restriction on the number of dogs and cats people could have, so that it was more like what our neighboring communities have? And there was not agreement to proceed with that. If there is interest at this time with this council reopening that discussion, we can, of course, do so. So, point taken. With regard to native plantings, we do have some vague code language that allows people to do it, but it isn't very detailed in how one assesses the quality or how it's maintained. Some communities do adopt not a licensing structure, but instead like a recognition program, so if you can meet certain criteria, it will be like registered as such. There are third parties, third-party organizations advocating for like Monarch Way stations, and so certainly there are some third-party verifications that have been done. How often are those organizations checking in over the years and how those sites are maintained? Can't say very often, I would imagine. But that, too, is something that we can certainly explore, trying to firm up. It does come back, as Alderman Hurt very astutely pointed out, to our bandwidth, you know, do we have enough people to actually go and make clear discernments about, you know, these sorts of things? Driving around any of the wards in the city, you will find a lot of people doing some pretty creative things with their landscaping, vegetable gardening, native planting areas. It, it's increasingly hard to know where lines should be drawn and how things should be assessed, because things are just getting more and more complex. Many of those things, staff actually are very happy to see, you know, kind of going towards a less mowed landscape that's more native plants, demonstrably good. More folks growing food for themselves, also wonderful. But all of these things have other unintended negative consequences, and figuring out a framework for all these things that is both, you know, respectful people's property rights, encourages them to do good things with their property to the benefit of us all and themselves, but also is reasonable for staff to administer, that's the challenge. So that'll be a kind of a thing that I think staff and the council will have to continually dialogue about as things change with time.
Seeing as how this proposal is coming to the council, because staff has recognized that the existing regulations are insufficient or, you know,
Or nonexistent.
Something needing to be changed. Since you are the staff that mitigate dog nuisances in the city, do you think that the city's existing dog regulations are sufficient, or should that be relooked at again?
So I wrote the ordinance, but I am not responsible for its enforcement. I would defer to the chief of police on the question of animal control.
Well, I would just say, I just had about a two different days' worth of a hearing on a dog barking case, where there was like 700 exhibits. So it is an issue, and you always have to have a complaint, and then if they violate it, what's the remedy? You just fine them $100. So there are some spots in there that makes enforcement difficult. What we ended up doing in a, in a recent case is the, we convinced the administrative judge to hold off on fines and seeing if they could remedy the issue and get it under control, get the dog under control. But there are dog barking issues, and how do you enforce that? Because it's a $100 fine, they're just going to pay the fine. I do think there's, I've seen other ordinances, and I've been in other municipalities, that I think handles the vicious dogs a little bit better than the city of Rock Island does, and that is something that I would like to probably clean up through the ordinance and through municipalities and working with police and the animal control officers, just to make sure we are able to, I don't want to euthanize dogs, but if there is a vicious dog that causes issues, I would rather euthanize the dog than have them kill a child. So there are things that I think need to be cleaned up, and we can work on doing that.
Attorney Day, can you remind me, I believe, in regards to the limit of number of animals, in neighboring Moline, I think that the way they do it is, it's a total of four, any combination of dogs and cats, so you could have four cats or four dogs, and then two of each, or whatever.
I couldn't speak specifically about that. I know that that's common for municipalities to combine the number, and so we would have to think of what is a normal number, and if we would grandfather them. But yes, I do think there's issues that we, seeing in the enforcement, how to handle those issues, and we could work with police and animal control and do what we want to do.
In terms of noise complaints, I do want to point out that there have been many occasions where in the early mornings, I have been wandering through the streets of Rock Island to find a rogue rooster. So, you know, they, they do cause occasional problems and are hard to find. Since we've kind of come up on time, I just want to emphasize again, you know, the goal here is to kind of get the dialogue moving. We're looking to get feedback on this and the rental ordinance. So if for some reason you didn't receive a copy of the ordinances, just hit me up, and I'll make sure you get them. Otherwise, we're here to answer your questions and take your feedback. These are complex issues that require quite a bit of dialogue, and we've got a lot of different residents wanting a lot of different things, so we're going to need to kind of work together to sort it out. So with that, thank you very much.
Anyone sign up for a public comment? No one? Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.